Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, April 25, 2022. The time is now 6:30 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if I could bring Wayne, if you want to come up here for one minute? So as many of you know, as you've seen, Wayne is finishing his time on the Planning Board. He's not running for reelection. And tonight, we are honoring Wayne with Abington's Best Award. So Abington's Best for Wayne P. Smith, April 25, 2022, whereas Wayne Smith has served on the Planning Board for 48 years, Chairman for more than 20 years. Wayne Smith has been a longtime tireless member of the Abington Lions Club, as well as a past District Governor of Lions Club International, whereas Wayne Smith has been a member and served as Treasurer on the Mass Farm Bureau, whereas Wayne Smith's membership in the Mass Farm Bureau was pivotal in the acquisition of the open space known as the Carista property, whereas Wayne Smith has been a Director and a past Chairman of the Old Colony YMCA, whereas Wayne Smith has also been a Director of the Colonial Road Runners Club, whereas Wayne Smith is also the past President of the Mass Agricultural Club. Now, therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the Town of Abington and its residents, recognize the enormity of your service to the Town of Abington and to the community. You are the definition of a true public servant, and you will be missed. Thank you.[143.01][143.01](applause) This time, we'd like to call Mike Sullivan up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I actually have a slight promotion this evening for a few minutes. I'm no longer the father of the State Representative. I'm the Assistant to the Assistant of the Legislative Aid of the State Representative. She wanted to be here this evening, Wayne, to recognize you, but the House is in session this evening, and she's there working on the state budget. I had the opportunity to meet Wayne 35 years ago. You probably don't even remember the circumstances, but water was running across our backyard from a field onto the street, and Wayne and the building inspector showed up and says, "You can't let water run across your backyard to the street." Well, long story short, Wayne, the building inspector, the zoning board, all figured out a way to resolve the issue, and Wayne's been a problem solver for the Town of Abington on behalf of the constituents. He's served for his 48, 49 years. So Wayne, on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they want to recognize you for your 48 years of hard work, dedication, exemplary public service to the Town of Abington, Planning Board, and the 20 years of service as the Chairman. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. It's signed by the Speaker of the House, Juan Mariano, and the State Representative for Abington, Allison Sullivan. Congratulations, Wayne.[257.12][257.12](applause)
Wayne, would you like to say a few words?
I know what it's like to be sitting up there. They have a meeting to run tonight, and I'm going to take a few extra seconds off the time clock. And I hate to tell you how recently I finished this. I thank the Town of Abington and the Board of Selectmen for this honor, and appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. For me, lifelong friendships are what has made the Lions for me, and it's because of the Lions that I was introduced to the Planning Board. One was Paul DiMatto. In 1972, he said that there was an opening on the Planning Board where he is a member, and I should apply. I did. The only person on the Board I did not know was the Chair, Ken Bates, and I don't think I said much. The rest of the Board introduced me. I think the Planning Board would say I speak too much nowadays. My love for Abington and the changes I've seen have been something else over the last 63 years. Today, it sounds funny that my first employment was when I was 12 years old, except for mowing lawns. After college, I commuted from Fall River to Abington to work at Littlefield Wyman Nurseries. In 1959, Priscilla and I were married, and we lived in an apartment over the offices of Littlefield Wyman for $30 a month. After two children, we decided, or Priscilla decided, we needed a house. We looked around, and I remember saying, "We will never be able to afford a house." Can you imagine? $14,000. Well, we did find a house on Ashland Street. Have rents and mortgages gone up. In 1969, Doc Murray, a dentist in town, called me and told me about the things the Abington Lions Club did and asked me to join. It was the second time I was called. The year before, the other president called, and Priscilla said, "Who was that on the phone?" And I told her, "And what did he want?" He said, "He wanted me to join the Lions Club." "Well, what'd you say?" I said, "No." "Why?" She said, "Because it's a night..." He told me it was a night out of the house, and that's the least thing I needed were the hours I was working. So he probably thinks he was the best salesman in the world, but Priscilla told me how to answer that phone call the following year.[462.12][462.12](laughter) A speaker came one evening. I got ahead of myself here. I guess I did. A Lion anyway, a speaker came to me one, to the, talk about getting shook up tonight, to speak at the Lions meeting from the Old Colony YMCA, and talked about the Y's Way to Fitness. I joined to get back in shape. It was a lifelong impact on my life. And I think of my friend Jeff Russell over here from the Y. Now, the Old Colony YMCA has seven branches in Plymouth, from Plymouth to Stoughton, four summer camps, program services from Cape to Pittsfield for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with Department of Youth Services, Department of Children's and Families, Office of Community Corrections, Adolescent Treatment, and Residential Services, largest provider of daycare facilities on the South Shore, a mentoring program for children, and two youth bill programs. Old Colony Y, 135 years old, serving 150,000 people a year. In fact, sitting right there, I followed you as Chair. That was a few years ago, wasn't it?[561.16][561.16](laughter) The Running Club, the Running got me involved with Colonial Road Runners and raised a great deal of funds for Massachusetts Lions Eye Research. Then, the meetings were many times twice a month, and we were known to be there until 10:00 and sometimes close to 12:00. We had many problems, a large subdivision with septic systems overflowing in the streets, for one, eventually to find out that the engineer's stamp was allegedly stolen, and two bank surety letters of credit were fraudulently signed. Fortunately, we were able to make the bank pay the amount close to $300,000 because it always appeared on the passing of the deeds, so they should have known. Court cases are few today. I can recall only three during my term. One is presently going on. Over the years, we had only three Chairs, Ken Bates, Ed Curran, and myself. Part-time Secretaries and the Chair took most of the phone calls. Thankfully, when the South Shore, when the South Weymouth-based redevelopment came up, we had Dan Crane, retired from the Old Colony Planning Council as a Town Planner. Dan did our master plan as part of his employment. We only had a Town Planner for a few years, when the Town took it out of the budget due to fiscal restraints. The first master plan cost the Town $15,000. Dan did the second as part of his employment. When we put the one that came out in 2020 out for bid, we were quoted $150,000. We got it done with the help of Bruce Hughes by the Conway School and a small section by Dan Crane, long retired, for less than $20,000. At the same time, Dan reviewed our zoning regulations for about $10,000 rather than the projected $75,000. I think saving money is always so important. It's your money. The Town had an opportunity to buy the Carista property, and they talked about that earlier, so we won't get into that. But I did get in trouble for having Farm Bureau lend $65,000 to Abington, and it took a while before we decided we had the money to pay them back. I'm sure I would have retired earlier had it not been for Liz Shay. As our Secretary and now Assistant Town Planner, she made my job a lot easier. My family has been supportive in every way. As I wrote this, I thought of each of our children, Kathy and our Running together, the wonderful time to talk with no interruptions. I suggest that for any parent. Randy, her spouse, that was Chair of the Old Colony Y and gave considerable funds from Ocean Spray Cranberries while he was Chair, and while he was President of Ocean Spray and, I'll mix that up, too. David, who has worked with me most of his life, except for a few years with some other people in the industry, so he realized how great it was working for his father, maybe.[793.31][793.31](laughter) And even driving a loader for the Town in the Blizzard of '78 when he was only 15. So I started him early, too. That was not against the law, by the way, at that time. So Scott, everybody was fine.[813.38][813.38](laughter) And the historian in the family, and he grounds me once in a while, and Lisa, that should have written this for me, as she would have done a much better job.[826.48][826.48](laughter) Debbie, a teacher, the first woman Abington Lions President, much to the delight of Kate Kelly, Liz Shay's mother, when she wrote for the Quincy Patriot Ledger. Pam has done so much for me, always, didn't think I'd get through this. Pam has done so much for me, always there bailing me out. Lions know her throughout New England by name. Right now, she is writing thank you notes for me again, for Future Farmers of America foundations for their donors. My love for the land, respect for the land, and how it is used. I hope that I've brought that perspective to the Board, present members, Bruce, Jeff, Rick, and Bob. Thank you. If I have, if I have one thought to leave you, always do the right thing. Thank you.[898.98][898.98](applause) Oh, and as you, you all sit down, please. This is all about a grandson, so I've decided to grow a beard. I don't know how much fur that's going to get, but good night.
Thank you, Wayne. Does the Board have anything they want to share with Wayne?
Just to thank you. Forty years is a long time. After six years, I'm thinking four now.[949.51][949.51](laughter)
And thank you, Wayne. I've been before your Board many times, as you know, and we've always gotten along great. You've always done a good job. We appreciate everything you've done for the Town.
Thank you, Wayne, for your service.
Thank you. Public announcements? Alex?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of announcements for tonight's meeting. Abington Copes, which is Community Outreach Prevention Education and Support, are hosting their first fundraiser at the Abington Ale House on Saturday, May 21st, at 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The new coalition is working toward prevention, support, recovery, and education for our youth as it strives to stamp out the stigma of addiction while promoting a path to recovery for those affected by addiction. There will be raffles, appetizers, and giveaways. Come support people helping people. I did have to add one, an announcement tonight. On April 27th, this Wednesday, there will be a virtual Center School Reuse discussion. We just had a, we just conducted a feasibility study of the property. We heard from the residents and what you would like to see done on this property. Lot of good feedback. We're also, if you'd like to chime in into the discussion on Wednesday, there is a link that you can subscribe to on the Town website. And then for people who are not as technically savvy, we will also be here in the Carter Room here on April 27th at 7:00 PM here to discuss the Center School Reuse project. So that should be good, and we'd love to hear feedback from you there as well. Lastly, my, excuse me, my last public announcement, Mr. Chairman, I just want to take a point of personal privilege here. This one's kind of personal for me. Excuse me, I'll have some water. As the month of May is concluding, I wanted to emphasize the importance of autism awareness. Autism spectrum disorder is a neurological developmental disorder that affects social skills, speech, obsessive interests, nonverbal communication, learning skills, and repetitive behaviors. As many know, autism is a vast spectrum. Like colors on a rainbow, no persons living with autism are the same. Each are unique, and together, they make something beautiful, like a rainbow or a puzzle. We dedicate every April to autism, to spread awareness through education, promote acceptance through love, and ignite change. Every day is an opportunity for us to learn and champion for those we love with autism. To learn more about autism and how you can help someone you love with autism, go to thenationalinstituteofmentalhealth.com. Autism is lifelong. As a person with autism, I can say, "Our hearts are our compasses, fueled by our dreams." The journey is filled with obstacles. No matter the fall, get back up. Each climb makes you stronger. Each of us is born uniquely to give the world variety. Embrace your gifts. A nurturing family, friends, and teachers will help you flourish. Ignite your futures by believing in your dreams. Never stop dreaming. Eighteen years ago, I was diagnosed with autism, Asperger's Syndrome. Today, I sit up here as a Selectman for the Town of Abington. Autism doesn't define a person. We, as people with autism, define it. In conclusion, in honor of Autism Awareness Month, I'd like to conclude with a quote from my childhood that continues to inspire me, and I hope and will inspire others. It's by Mewtwo from Pokemon the First Movie. "The circumstances of one's birth are irrelevant. It is what you do with the gift of life that determines who you are." Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for public announcements.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, just one. Yesterday, me and the family walked up to the All Wars Memorial. They had the Vietnam End of War Anniversary Ceremony, and it was very humbling to attend. I hope more people start to attend now that it's back. I think they said it had been on hiatus for at least two years due to the pandemic. You know, we need to support those guys. Let them know that, you know, we're thinking about them. And on a side note, a kudos. Again, I can't say enough about Adam Gunn, our VSO. They were setting up the flags. They realized one of the flags was ripped. There was a little bit of worry, like, where are we going to get another flag? Adam was like, "Well, I got one." They're like, "Where?" They're like, "Oh, I always keep one in my car." So this guy drives around with a brand-new American flag in his car for these opportunities. Above and beyond is an understatement, so just a shout out to Adam and everyone involved yesterday.
Thank you, Mike. Alex?
Yes, I do have one. But before I do that, I just want to let everyone know that Abington Copes is the former Abington Substance Awareness Coalition, so please support it. We've got a whole new Board of Directors and starting over since COVID, so I don't want anyone to think there's any competition or anything in it. It's all the same, but we just have a lot of great new members and directors, and trying to really get going on that again because we weren't able to do much, as you know, during COVID. But I want to talk about the Ames Noel Cleanup Schedule for Saturday, April 30. Fans of the Ames Noel State Park can help spruce it up. The scheduled cleanup on April 30 between 10:00 AM and noon. The cleanup is coordinated by the Ames Noel State Park Master Plan Committee, which is finalizing a strategy for, to bring big, I mean, bring short and long-term improvements to the 600 acre park. April 30 is also Election Day, and they've intentionally scheduled it the same day from 10:00 to noon in hopes that people will do both. Please bring your own gloves and rakes if you can, and meet at the Linwood Street entrance, and I hope it's a big turnout. I think there was a last year or a couple of years ago when they did it, so let's hope we can get everyone out and do that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, just a reminder to piggyback on Alex's mention of the elections, that the elections are this Saturday, April 30. They're at the Beaver Brook Elementary School. All precincts will vote there. Polls are open 8 to 6, and we have two contested races. Is that right?
School Committee and Planning Board.
School Committee and Planning Board, so.
And Board of Health. Board of Health, so it's three.
Oh, Board of Health, yeah, yeah. So there's three contested.
So three contested races, that's this Saturday, polls 8 to 6 at the Beaver Brook Elementary School.
Thank you. And just one thing, friends, family, anyone who wants to say something to Wayne, over in the Buckley Room, I know it is empty right now. If you want to go over there, I'm sure Wayne would love to go there and talk there and shake, you know, shake his hand and, you know, any thoughts you have for him. Thank you.
Yeah, let's.
What's that?
Let's move her up.
Is there any one in the audience that has any public comments or anything that's on the agenda tonight? We will discuss as we go, but not seeing any. I know we do have some things. I don't know if you, if the Board is interested in moving up the.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move up the MBTA appointment that we have at, well, it's not an appointment, it's an item, so I'd like to do it now and get it over.
All right. Is the Board fine with moving that up?
No objections.
Thank you. And I'm well aware of your time constraints, too, so we'll keep it very brief. I gave you guys a copy. You should have received a copy of the draft guidelines for the MBTA Communities, which is what they're calling the multi-family districts under 3A of the Zoning Act. That's exactly what they are, draft guidelines. We don't anticipate having final regulations until the summer. At that point in time, we are gonna try to get a grant, and if not, we'll get a consultant to help us, help the Town determine what the best course of action would be. I also gave everybody a copy of, an article that was in The Globe yesterday, and a quick read will show you a lot of towns are kind of pushing back. The bottom line is towns, and our own Planning Board feels we're sort of being punished because we've done a lot of multi-family by special permit, and we should be able to count that just because it wasn't by right. We still have, it still exists. So TBD on all of that. So all I am here tonight is to make sure you have a copy of the guidelines. I will take the agenda and a form they require us to fill out, and we will be compliant for 2022. Does anybody have any questions?
So the Selectman had to be notified, and that's why.
You had to, there had to be a presentation to the Board of Selectmen that you got the draft regulations. Consider yourself presented.
That was the best presentation we've had.
There we go, right? I should do all of them.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? I really don't have a lot of answers, but I can try.
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, Liz, I might have one.
That's okay.
So I'm looking at, so the location of the districts. What?
Have to be a half mile within the train station, so that everybody knows where the train station is off of Center Avenue, off of Summer Street. So this district we would have to create would have to be within a half mile. So it could be from the train station towards Target or from the train station towards Center Abington.
Okay.
Or it could be train station half mile around.
All right. So as, so hypothetically, as it's written now, is there any spacers right now that we could actually, that the district could actually go?
As they have it?
As it's written now, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, just what I said. It's a half a mile. We have to exclude wetlands, and there has to be the potential to develop X amount of units.
You can't just pick a spot that's undevelopable.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, but I, like I said, there is a lot of pushback from towns, and maybe we'll be able to count the units that already exist within a half mile from our, from our train station.
Okay.
I don't know that yet.
That'd be great.
That would be fabulous.
Are they just limiting to the half a mile, or are they, are they going to?
It's a half a mile because somebody actually suggested we could do it a half a mile from the Weymouth Train Station on Route 18, which sounds fabulous, but won't work.
On receiving a copy of the bond and that the change of occupancy form and seventy-five-dollar fee is paid to the building department.
I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous.
Thank you gentlemen.
Good luck. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. By all means. What's next? You retiring?
I have to, the wife will leave me. I'd just like to thank the Board of Selectmen for twenty-two years of this town being supportive and all of us trying to keep things on the straight and level. And I'd like to thank all the residents that have supported me for twenty-two years. It's been a great ride, and I thank all you gentlemen very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your success.
Time is now seven-ten. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven P.M. in the Clodder Hearing Room. Abington Town Office is five-hundred Glynnowitz Way. For request to transfer a Class Two and Commercial Garage License from Rivers Auto to Claudio Netto DBA Eight Ten Auto Motors LLC, Eight Ten Brockton Avenue. Natalia Alves, manager.
I'll make your motion to open the public hearing. I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous. Meeting is now open. How you doing?
Good evening. My name is Claudio Neron. I'm from the Cape Cod. And we tried to open a new business in Abington. We tried to extend it from the Cape to here. We always want to move to the South Shore. We've been in business over twenty years on a Cape. And we are trying to extend it. And this is my partner, Natalia.
So this is the same as the previous hearing, I understand? It's just new owners coming in, the previous owner retired. And same thing, I think we have the seventy-five-dollar fee for this that's required also. So you'll have to go see the building department for that.
Okay.
But I think everything else is in order, isn't it?
So this is number of cars for repair, two, four customer spaces, two employee spaces. So eight cars on property, that's total? That's the total number of cars you'll be allowed on property?
Should be fifteen on display, right?
This one is a...
Number five, fifteen for sale, four customer total, twenty-one.
That's for a commercial garage license?
That's for the garage license?
Yeah.
This is for the... Any other Class Two?
So this license, you already have this license?
No, we're transferring both Scott, correct?
Transfer Class Two and...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So they do auto repair and auto sales. So nothing is changing from the existing licenses? Everything's staying the same?
Correct.
So... Oh, and Commercial, yeah, the public hearing is for both.
So any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Any public comment? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. It's unanimous.
Now I'll make the motion to transfer the Class Two and Commercial Garage License from Rivers Auto to Claudio Arahu Netto DBA Eight Ten Auto Motors LLC, Eight Ten Brockton Ave. Natalia Alves, manager.
Subject to the...
The seventy-five.
The change of occupancy.
Change of occupancy.
That was for the Class Two and the Commercial License.
Both, yep.
All right.
If it's required for both, I'm not sure it is. And I'll second that.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if you don't mind, I think we should skip to number two now and let the fire chief come up. I think he can...
I think we should go through everything else first.
They're used to sitting around with two of the...
Wow. Fire Chief Nuttall to provide update on the forest fire truck FEMA grant.
Thank you, John Nuttall, your fire chief. I just want to give an update in recognition on the new forest fire truck that arrived in town last week. It was actually driven back by one of the firefighters we have here tonight, firefighter Justin Silva and Captain Cotty. The vehicle was located on Long Island. And this is the truck in front of Station One on Route Eighteen right now that... I'm just going to say what everybody's who has seen this truck, the official technical term is this is a wicked cool fire truck. My son wanted me to say that tonight, but it really does fit. This is a small brush truck, it's a small fire engine. It's actually, it's a large brush truck for us. Custom-built for the town of Abington by the specifications by the two firefighters that are here, I'll bring up in a minute, that we... They won, this is all their work, on a FEMA grant a couple of years ago. It took a long time to get to the point to actually have the truck in town. It's still not in service yet because now we're waiting for the paperwork to catch up to it. They had the truck all ready to go at two o'clock in the morning the other night, literally, it was ready to go, until I showed up and said, "We can't drive it until it's insured." So it's still sitting there waiting for the paperwork to catch up. And Justin was actually working on that today, trying to get that push going. To give an idea of, you know, we've had numerous grants, and I have a list of these, but vehicles are very difficult to get. This is the first vehicle we got in a grant. Basically, it's about a one percent award ratio or rate when people are applying for these competitive grants for a vehicle. We've got a number of grants that we have done throughout the last ten years totaling almost two million dollars just over the last ten years alone. And just a quick reminder on all of that, you know, these began really around two thousand twelve with we had a combination Abington Rockland Fire Radio Infrastructure Grant, which was over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Abington firefighter Richie Smith was really our key person on that one, working with the Rockland Fire Department. That really began rebuilding the fire department radio infrastructure, which we still use today. We've had grants, a lot of these written by Deputy Glynn, he was, he's an excellent grant writer. We've replaced all of our Scott Air bottles one year. The following year, we had a much larger Scott Air pack replacement, the breathing air compressor to fill all of those. We updated the entire breathing air ensemble that this entire department has. That was also well in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. We had, again, this was Deputy Glynn, the safer grant. This was the staffing grant that we got back in FY thirteen. That was almost a million dollars to hire four firefighters initially, and that really changed our operations. That really got us into running the second ambulance to help upset that, to retain them after that grant ran out after three years. We had a hose and appliance grant back about twenty fifteen or sixteen. Again, Justin was instrumental in helping us with that. That replaced every single piece of equipment, literally, from the fire hydrant to the fire with the exception of the actual pump. All of the hose, all of the nozzles, all of the appliances, all of it was replaced. We replaced hoses that went back to the nineteen, early nineteen sixties, and we had nozzles going back to the nineteen fifties. All brand-new equipment. That, I believe, was at least a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred thousand dollars. We had rescue extrication equipment a couple of years ago that replaced all of our jaws, they're all cordless now, as well as a number of other rescue, heavy rescue equipment, some smaller things, gear washers, dryers, the current forest fire skid pump unit that goes into the back of the glorified pickup truck. All of this was done with grants. We had a vehicle computer tablet grant that was done a couple of years ago by firefighter O'Toole. That put a, an updated computer in every vehicle that we have, for the most part. We still have the state safe grants, that's the, when the firefighters go into the schools to teach, that's all, that's a state grant. We kind of match that to make that work. We have one also, this is more of an earmark from Representative Sullivan, again, this was work with Justin and Captain Cotty and some others, a small four-by-four Gator vehicle, a little mini vehicle that we're going to use in the state park. A lot of times with injuries, if we have an injured party in there, it's a small vehicle to kind of scoot in there and get them out. We're working to see if we can fit a small fire pump on that as well, we're not quite sure yet. And we're also going to get a trailer to house that in, because I have absolutely no room in the station for any of this. And currently, we're working on with Captain Cotty, he's our radio captain, a grant to begin replacing a lot of the portable and the mobile, the vehicle radios that were replaced with the original grant back in twenty thirteen, twenty, two thousand twelve. We have, my department has done an incredible amount of work for the Abington taxpayers and really just to keep everybody safe with the grants. Like I said, we're just about two million dollars in the last ten years, Ian counting. So I'm very proud of that, and this is a complete team effort, which again brings us tonight, the reason I'm here, talking not just about this vehicle, because I could talk all night about the vehicle, it's a cool vehicle.
Wicked.
It's a wicked cool vehicle, thank you. But I really wanted to, if you guys want to come up, and they're not looking for this, they're embarrassed, and I get it, they're not seeking any notoriety on this, but I really want to give credit and recognition where it's due, because they came to me a couple of years ago and says, "Chief, we're kind of interested in applying for a grant to get a forest fire truck," which we have not had luck with these, to be honest with you. But I'm like, I'm not going to say no. They're asking, this is above and beyond, they don't have to do any of this, there's a lot of work. I think they discovered just how much work this is, and it's continuing the work, because now we also have to manage the grant. But this is good, because we're also spreading this knowledge down or across to, you know, it shouldn't just be at the top. I really wanted to spread this knowledge and experience throughout my department, because that's just good for any organization. You don't want to have just one person knowing how to do this. And they ran with it. So I gave them really full rein. I had a couple of small requirements I wanted to have if we get this vehicle. I wanted it to be a crew cab, I want to be able to fit extra firefighters in there. That's a safety feature. The firefighter, the forest fire that we have now, that's actually an old converted ambulance chassis. And the Abington Highway Department, almost twenty years ago, reconfigured that. They took the ambulance box off of that, and they added some utility bodies and a skid pump to that. They did an incredible job, but it's old and it's tired, and these vehicles get beat up a lot. And that was not the intent of this vehicle when it was originally built. So that vehicle is tired, but we can only fit two firefighters in that. So when we have these fires deep in the woods, or a lot of times up on the pole line, and a lot of places where people have no idea it's even Abington, we know where it is, but there's some areas that are fairly deep in there, most of the firefighters have to walk in there. And that's, you know, you may be going in almost a mile, and it's all rough terrain, you've got all your gear, and then after battling these fires, sometimes it's a quick fire, sometimes we have these fires that go for days on end. It's very fatiguing, and one of my biggest concerns about brush fires, believe it or not, is cardiac arrest. So having a crew cab allows us to safely transport more firefighters back and forth. We're no longer riding in the back of the trucks. We kind of gave that up years ago, or we should have, but I know what happens. This vehicle, that's not going to occur. There's a whole bunch of safety features on this. Do you guys want to talk about this vehicle, or do you want to say anything?
I appreciate the opportunity, it's a good job. I appreciate the opportunity, the chief gave us a lot of... Can I take this vision?
Well, I'll let you talk up here, if, take the mic if you're going to talk, Justin. Because nobody's going to hear you.
No, thank you for your time. We appreciate the chief giving us the opportunity and the freedom to kind of take this, this vision of this piece of apparatus that the town needed and kind of bring the whole thing forth and go through the whole process. It was, it was difficult, but it was rewarding to go through the whole process and gain that information that we can pass down, you know, for the next successful grant, because there'll be a few more to come, I'm sure. So thank you, chief, for letting us take this on and believing that we could do it. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for all the hard work you guys did and input forth in it. I mean, you saved the town a lot of money, you have a new piece of equipment for the department, for the community, you know, much long-lasting impact of that, so appreciate all the hard work and everything you've done to save the taxpayers and to, you know, help improve the department itself. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is, yes, there's a money saving. This is about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar vehicle that would have been on my capital request otherwise, now it's not. And I know the finance committee was happy about this, I know Scott was happy about it, and I'm sure the entire board is, and obviously the residents are. Not just thanking you for the financial aspect of this, although that is huge, really, I'm thankful for the safety aspect, because not only just getting more firefighters in it, the design of this vehicle, it has rollover protection, it has winches in the front and the back, because these vehicles get stuck in the woods, in the mud, and that's a very dangerous operation when we try to winch these back out back into the road. So they came up with all of the research they did, there's front and back winches, there's rollover protection, the reels, the actual hose reels that we have on these are lower to the ground. Usually, we have them high up, which is actually very dangerous. When we go to rewind hundreds of feet of forestry hose, and it's always at the end of the incident, when all the firefighters are tired and fatigued, and now you get to climb up on top, balance, and you're literally balancing to get this done. Now, they've actually configured this vehicle, they're down at ground level. We never, we no longer have to do that. What an amazing idea. I don't know why we didn't think of it thirty years ago, but thank you for thinking of that. I think this is a much safer vehicle, and that's my real concern on this, or thanks on this. So without further ado, I just want to, and I know you weren't looking for these, but one for Justin, one for Kyle, just a small appreciation of, certificate of appreciation for all of the work that you've done with this vehicle. This is really the crown jewel of a lot of the grants that we have received over the last ten years, and I think this is going to be, probably outlive a lot of the other equipment that we've received with grants as well. So, well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would have done the beginning if you had known that, you would have had a nice audience. Here we go.
Unless the board has any questions, that's all I have, so.
I think we're good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job.
All right, item number one, vote to approve the minutes of March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous. Number four is discuss and vote on extension of outdoor dining until April first of two thousand twenty-three.
Can we charge fifteen thousand, oh, seventy-five hundred for a restaurant?
Let's break it for black. Holy Italian restaurants. That's Alex Rezansin, Abe Rezansin. So as you see in the packet, it has extended, or the government has extended this for another year. So does Iowa just gamble it like we have the last couple of years? We did ask pretty much all of the restaurants, we weren't anticipating this, so we asked them if they wanted to do it permanently or continue doing what they were doing, if they would let us know, because obviously they wanted to do it permanently. We had to apply, or they had to apply to the EDCC back when we did the transfer at the end of the year. There wasn't a lot, you know, other than maybe one or two places we're going to try and keep it on. So we'll let them know, you guys approved this, they can do it again, and then it's extended.
Is this just for outdoor dining, or is this for both?
Both.
Beer, wine, and cocktails to go? Just want to clarify that. I think that's a great addition as well.
Just don't try to leave the date in the glass or anything like that. Don't worry about it, no.
That's Tim Chapin, T.J.'s.
Scott, to make a motion for this, do we have to set the date?
April first, two thousand twenty-three?
Yeah.
I think it goes until then.
Effective immediately, I would think, right?
Effective now until April first, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there any restaurants still doing outdoor dining? I'm trying to think, I was trying to think as we were going...
I think the depot probably, they still have that set up, don't they?
Old Town Cafe had a lot of... Old Town had outside of the area, yeah.
Most of them still have. I think most of them have done it permanent. Well, I think it seems like it's permanent. They haven't necessarily gone through the permanent, you know, so they can, they can do it for another year without going through ABC.
Right. Okay. And do we, when making the motion, do we do it separately for the expanded outdoor table service and then...
We do them both at once.
Together? Okay.
We'll entertain a motion.
All right, then, with that being said, I will make a motion to extend, to expanded outdoor table services and beer and wine and cocktails to go. Any expansion of or change approved under these provisions will automatically revert to pre-pandemic status, effective immediately, April first, or, excuse me, effective immediately to April first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Number five is discuss and vote, request to use a portion of Island Grove for a private event.
Yeah, you see that you have in your package a request on the South Shore Gymnastics Academy. I believe they've gone there, certainly last year, they might have used it in the past, pretty cool, but also they just have a little banquet, they bring all their own food, they do all their own cleanup, there will be musical shows, couple bars, and attendance. And it's just five to each, you know.
So why is this in front of us?
Because we decided about even, maybe two years ago, that any event over fifty people would refer in front of the water.
Just to get our approval.
I was absent that day, apparently.
We're just not paying attention.
I voted against it. Should go in front of the recreation.
Would you like to make a motion?
They actually approve it also.
Yeah, okay. I have no issue.
Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. And we have number six, the infamous town manager report.
Adam Gunn, our veteran service officer, we've got some clues on earlier tonight. He has requested that we designate some spots at Town Hall for veterans' parking only. And you can see, one of the spots in this picture has fire vehicles in it, that's to the site exit of Town Hall. We'd like to put one there. And then the other picture has two spots in front of Town Hall, to like the netto, dead netto.
That's Tim's spot.
I usually park, we get this picture.
And actually, that's where I'm parking right now.
So...
Actually, we had that towed.
Oh, you did? So I'm not there now.
If we focus in. Yes. Again, you know, Adam would like to show his appreciation for veterans. We talked with Deb Grimick, with the library staff, great idea, she talked to her board about it, they thought it was a great idea. Obviously, I think it's an idea.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's great. Just curious, why the one spot around the side? Is there anything significant to that, or?
I believe it's, they have direct access to the health department, too, though.
Is that what, okay.
And there's a curb cut here, so for accessibility purposes, this is a handicap spot, so you can get up if you need to onto the sidewalk, it's here, and then, you know, the health department's right there.
So, so does Leanne get a sign in her spot, too?
If you so desire.
You don't need a motion for a...
That's Leanne, right?
Support it, yep.
Should we make it over here? I support this.
Yeah, absolutely.
The curb cut here, right?
I'm just going by what she asked.
Yeah, that sign?
She could make the recommendation. These are the curb cuts there, and the two handicap spots next to it.
Is this, or is this the handicap right here, and this one's not? That is a painted handicap, I would just...
There is a sign in front of it.
Yeah, and you can see the blue on the ground. I just was curious why I didn't just do it here.
I can ask them.
But, either way.
Effectually, you like the idea.
I'm just thinking if he, if, if the idea is, you know what I mean?
To use the curb cut to...
Use the curb cut.
Make it actual, something you can use.
Sure. Rather than having to get out here and go around to get up.
I'm sure if you just ran it by him.
I know. Thank you all for that.
Okay.
Makes sense. County was scheduling collective fire gaming sessions with Fire DPW for new three-year agreements, still working with police patrolmen, hope to come to an agreement soon. We received notification from the General's Office regarding Abington's allocation of opioid abstinence element. Abington will receive between twenty-two and fifty-six thousand dollars every year over the next sixteen years, totaling just over five hundred thousand dollars. The money allocated can be used for programs such as the one you were discussing earlier. They support and promote treatment oppressors with opioid dependencies, support and promote programs or strategies for treatment recovery, provide connections to care for people who have or are at risk of developing opioid dependence, support efforts to prevent overdose deaths or other opioid related harms. There were several uses that we are allowed to allocate the money for.
So the town would allocate that money?
As long as we follow the guidelines.
Right.
Correct. And it's, it is, the, the first year payment, I think, was fifty-six thousand, and then it varies, some years it's in the twenties and some years in the thirties.
So if Abington copes, wanted to do something with that money, they would present you a plan?
It would probably be to this board, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, I think we have to, you know, we just found out about it, and we have to sort of come up with a guideline for it, how we're going to do it, but, yeah. Well, we started the process of onboarding the new Code Red system. Code Red works much like the old Mixle system. It'll allow us to reach out, connect to the community. We just had the agreement with them today. We're going to do some on training next month, and we will have, obviously, the fire chief, police chief, myself, DPW director, water department, health department. It'll give us the, you know, obviously, the ability to let people know emergencies, or keep in touch with them and connect to them during emergencies or road closures, you know, anything like that. So we're looking forward to it. We will have the link on our website pretty soon for people to start signing up. I think most of the information that we have, whether it's through the Mixle sign-ups, or through email captures that we've done, we can transfer over anyway. So we have a pretty good starting data base. We have posted for a vacancy on the Southfield Board of Directors. Kevin Donovan has held the position for many years, but he will be stepping down in August. Interested parties should check our website for information on the qualifications required and the process to apply. It's been up there for about a week, and I think the deadline will be the Wednesday before year next year. At this point, it appears that the most viable site for the proposed fire station is the Central Street DPW ER. That being said, I did put out one last request for proposals for any interested parties within a certain geographic area that might want to sell us a piece of the property. That is due back tomorrow, I've not received any interest in it. I think that this DPW site is probably a great option anyways, and it's, it provides us the ability to take care of two projects in one. It really would, you know, sort of finish off our inventory of buildings and everything that would be fairly new. But that being said, I think it's necessary to add two members of the DPW and one member of the police department to the committee. So I recommend that the selectmen appoint the DPW director, John Stone, as well as a designated, I believe, director of DPW, and police chief, Del Patler, or a designated of his choosing to that committee.
How big is the committee now? Do you know?
Seven.
It's already a pretty, all right.
Well, the problem is, is we definitely, we need, you know, we need input. If you're going to co-locate with the DPW, we have ready to start the space needs analysis for the DPW, they have to be involved in it, so we definitely need their, their input as we go forward. And I, and the reason I think someone from the police department should get it, because it is, it is one large campus that's somewhat interconnected, so I think it's best for them to just have eyes on the project.
So it'd be Chief Del Patler or his designated, if he doesn't want to do it. But it would be, it would, that doesn't even want to change meaning from meaning, it would be one.
Yeah, he, he should select one, that's it.
And then, and then the same thing, it's John Stone, it's actually John Stone, and I want whoever he decides to. So would you like that motion tonight?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
We have a couple of job postings going up on the web, Treasure Collector, Sonia Hart will be leaving in the middle of May, she's moving back to Michigan. Sonia will be greatly missed, she was an incredible help at this past town meeting. I think you guys all saw her work that she did with me and with the finance committee on the budget. And at the same time, uh, you know, she was working the vet, uh, new help group, and get us into a better program for our self-insured help program. She's been managing the health insurance trust fund, and working on the financial policies with me to get those up and running. So she's definitely gonna be missing. But that job has been posted, it's up on the website, and um, anybody who's qualified and interested should pick it up. And then additionally, a job posting will go up in May for a building commissioner to be given, Drew Hart, to fill that position. And that's all I got for you.
Okay. Anything from the board?
No.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to be a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.